Yay.
Is that right? How's it going, Mark? How's it going, Mark? Can you hear me all right? Oh, your audio is still connecting? Greg, can you hear us?
I've got you now, Mark.
Okay, yeah, no, I was gonna call in, but I didn't want two different feeds.
I hear you, I'm the same way.
I just woke up from a nap.
No, I was thinking I needed one after last couple nights.
Michael, yes, I can hear you.
All right, Greg. Yeah, we had Tigerd last night till about midnight and night before that, the Capitol stuff, so.
Right.
Busy, kind of crazy week.
And my wife had surgery on her ankle on Tuesday, so it's been fun.
Yeah, my wife just got out of a surgery not too long ago. She had a foot surgery and it was about, I think, the few days afterwards were probably the worst, you know, because the pain starts setting in and everything, but.
Yeah.
Then after a couple weeks, she's like, I need to get the hell out of here. It's like, it's like, you're not allowed to walk yet.
Right. Yeah.
Well, it should be pretty quick tonight. I don't imagine we have too much to do. We just need to identify the council members and planning commissioners that will sit on the stakeholder and technical advisory committee. So it'd be one planning commissioner and one city councillor on the TAC and one planning commissioner and one councillor on the SAC. And are you familiar with the difference between the two?
Not really. I mean, I emailed you, so I think I got the gist of it, but.
Yeah, stakeholder. Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, the technical is more of like the backend technical side, right?
Yeah, you don't have your. Yeah, engineers and.
Stakeholder. Community input.
Yep, exactly. And I saw Carol put out email, but we probably need to have a talk about the old Harvey V. Lane County.
Right.
And be like, hey, Carol, you can't do emails to everybody. I mean, as long as no one, luckily, no one answered and there were no back and forth, but. Well, anyways, we got about 10 minutes, so I'm gonna kinda mute here and be just saying. Good evening, John and Lori. How are you guys doing? Said Dave and Carol coming on.
Hi, Mike.
Hey, Dave, how you doing?
Good.
Good. Happy New Year, everyone.
Yeah, Happy New Year, everyone.
It's been an exciting week.
Mike, you expect this to be fairly short?
Yes, definitely.
So you have another commitment that.
My hope is we can zip through this pretty quick.
So far, we have escaped any adverse activities.
Yeah, we've been fairly lucky on that front. I was actually kind of surprised it wasn't one of our officers over there at Bonita and Hall, so.
Yeah.
It very easily could have been, you know?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
How are you doing today?
I'm tired. I'm being drained by all this madness.
You all are.
Yeah, I just got onto Twitter and I was like, oh.
It is, it's really too much. It really is.
Yeah.
It's overshadowing so many good things that we could be talking about and doing, but occupying too much of my thought, waking hours. So I know that will change and I know I'll get through that and move beyond this point, but I'm not there yet.
Well, at least you won't be hearing tweets from him anymore.
Well, that's.
Yeah, right.
Hallelujah.
Yes, I'm very thankful for that, but what happened in Tigerd last night was too close to home. You know, we want to believe, you know, we saw everything that was going on in Portland and, you know, that was there, but now it's next door. And it's disturbing. I can't explain it any other way.
It was scary, Mayor. My, you know, my dad's business is on Main Street in Tigerd and he was there wanting to stay and defend and I called Officer Courtney and just got kind of a early, you know, this is earlier in the evening, around eight, and we kind of talked about what she was hearing. I called Dad back and was like, you need to go home, you know, and luckily he did, but.
What kind of damage to the business?
He didn't, they didn't sustain any damage. It looked like the path, he's just passed the liquor store and so the path of the rioters kind of went from that McDonald area down to the, you know, the corner of where the liquor store is and then turned and went down Burma or whatever. And so, you know, all those businesses down there, but I called Johnny over at Sherry's Jewelry Store today. We're quite friendly with them and he was helping, you know, everyone take down boards and stuff. For the most part, what he was saying was that that a lot of the graffiti and the damage that they did to businesses was on the plywood, so a lot of street signs were tagged, a lot of expense to the city, but thankfully to the small businesses, it, there was one broken window at the gym and everyone had to do a lot of cleanup because they threw trash everywhere. So it's not that there was no damage, right, but I think it was a blessing that as far as the businesses are concerned, it could have been just so much worse and just a.
No, I don't know about you guys, I don't know what you're hearing, but one of the reports that I heard earlier today is that most of these people who were involved in this were not from Tigerd.
Right.
Were not local people at all.
No, not at all.
You know, so we have all of these things that we have to consider that being infiltrated by outside sources.
Who are the people?
So it was a group called, we, my husband and I looked last night as we were trying to work out, you know, what to do with my, with my dad. So it's a, it was a Twitter handle that goes by the name of SafePDX and they, just looking at the feed in their Twitter, are organizing lots of these kind of pop-up agitative. agitative protest, you know, I, I don't, I don't call them protests, riots, I will, you know. So it was an or, it's an organized group that just does this across the Portland metro region.
So how can I help? How can I help business owners clean up or do whatever they need?
Who's that speaking?
My name is Lisa.
Oh, okay. I, I don't know. That's not what this meeting is for. Having this conversation prior to getting started, so we'll have to do that offline or at another point. Because we have some very specific business that we need to discuss.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, you're welcome, but I appreciate the question. So, Mike, your lead on this?
All right, so.
Where, where did I see? Oh, there's Steve. Hi, Steve. Thanks for joining us.
Hello, good evening.
I may have accidentally muted somebody. Sorry about that. All right, so basically, our job here is to go through roll call. And then we'll move into identifying one representative from each council or committee. So we have that, or sorry, commission. So we have the City Council and Plan Commission. And what we're gonna do is ask for nomination from amongst yourselves. So I think first we'll do Plan Commissioners and then we'll do City Counselors. And I just need one person to sit in on the tack and one person to sit in on the sack. From each body, okay? So what we'll do is we'll start with roll call. I think I'm missing someone. Hang on one second.
While you're doing that, Kate, I saw you. Where are you, Kate? Oh, there you are, right in my front, am I? You, your question has just been answered.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
So Mike, before we, can you explain overall what we're attempting to do? Kind of, or either you or Steve are talking about what the makeup of the SAC and so on. So that everybody here understands what it is we're getting ready to do here.
And I'm sorry, Mayor, I don't think, have we opened the meeting? I don't think we've officially opened, right? We're still, okay, I just wanna make sure.
And I'd like for that explanation to occur.
Yeah, before we actually go down that path, we'll explain to everyone what their duties will be and what kind of commitment this is.
Okay.
I think. Planning Commissioners, I think I'm missing someone. Who am I missing?
You're missing Annie.
Right, okay, gotcha. I was like, man.
What about?
That's it. Yep, so we're missing Annie. Micah, is Annie around or?
No, she's not. She's getting done with work.
Okay. All right, then I think it's safe to go ahead and we're still missing Smart. See him on the list. But anyways, we can, we can start, Mayor. We have quorums on both groups.
Okay, all right, sounds good. So we want to officially call the meeting to order. And Mike, you wanna take roll call?
Sure thing. I'll start with City Counselors. Mayor Gibson.
Yeah.
President Fender.
Here.
Counselor Thompson.
Here.
Counselor Platt.
Here.
Newly elected Counselor Moore. Counselor Paulson.
Here.
And Counselor O'Trulli. All right. So we have six and one. Plan Commission, Chair Petrie.
Here.
Commissioner Walters.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Manel's.
Here.
Commissioner Bellows.
Here.
Commissioner Moore is now on the Plan Commission, so, or not the Plan, but the Council, so we'll X that out. And Commissioner Paulson is absent, so. All right, so we should have a quorum of both. All right, so our goal here today is to basically have each of your respective cohorts nominate two members of your party. So if you're City Counselors, then I need two City Counselors. If you're Plan Commission, I need two Plan Commission. The purpose for that is we're gonna put one person on each. One's gonna be on the tack. The tack is the Technical Advisory Committee. Comprised of people that are business professionals in planning and development, finance, engineering, environmental, sanitary, water, road construction, all the elements that we need, the housing, basically all the elements that we need for doing our expansion. So that's gonna be your technical group. That's gonna be career professionals, things of that nature. That's gonna be your group that's gonna give us where the rubber meets the road. So the tack is going to evaluate the information that Steve and his group bring to them and tell us if it's gonna fly or if it's not gonna fly. And maybe there's some hurdles or some challenges there that we haven't seen from our side that they know about. That, that's basically where that front is. The second group is the SAC. The SAC is the Stakeholders Advisory Committee, and that is a group of community members. And this is your community input, your community members. They're gonna be the group that is like your frontline, kinda behind the scenes evaluators to tell us what the community feedback's going to be along the way. So this is a group where I think we have something, and Steve can correct me, but I think we're up to about. I think we're up to mute, guys mute. I think we're up to almost twenty members on the SAC so far, Steve.
With, with a Planning Commissioner and Counselor will have twenty, about twenty, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have about twenty members on that. It could get a little, it's, it's so a little monster because you have so many people and it's in a format such as this. So usually with a SAC, we like to have more of an open format where people can have open dialogue and discussions. It's gonna be a little bit more challenging doing it through Zoom, but I, I think we're gonna find our way. We'll figure it out, but that's where you're gonna get your community input. And that's gonna be, you know, the people on the ground. There's probably gonna be a higher level of emotions involved. There's going to be a lot more of impact analysis, a lot more of evaluating what those impacts are to our citizens and, and probably less of the technical stuff, so. But I think in the end, everybody's gonna be reviewing the same documents. Everybody's going to be reviewing the same data materials. And the hope and goal is, is that we can find a way to create something that ha, envisions or embodies everyone's feedback. Of course, sometimes the data points in a different direction and we have to kinda follow the data sometimes. Sometimes we can actually follow the community input more and, and go down that road. So with that in mind, I'm gonna pass it off to Steve who's with us today, and Steve is with Three J. And he is our lead consultant for the master planning work. And he'll be, him and his crew will be the ones basically spearheading a lot of this. And I'm gonna let him delve into any information that maybe I missed, or maybe I didn't cover thoroughly. So Steve?
Thanks, Mike. And thank you, Mayor and Counselors and Commissioners. It's nice to meet you all. I've met some before, but it's nice to meet you all. I'll just say that on behalf of my company, Three J Consulting, and our whole team, we're really excited to be working on this project. Mike, I think you covered things pretty well. I would characterize our Technical Advisory Committee as mainly agency partners. Whether that's ODOT or the city of Tigerd or TriMet or DLCD or, you know, Clean Water Services, all of our agency partners that not only do we value their technical expertise, but in some cases, we need their buy-in in order to make sure that all this is gonna move forward in the future. Our Stakeholder Advisory Committee is much more our community members. And like Mike said, there, everyone's gonna review the same materials. We just might ask our stakeholder group some different questions. We, we expect them to help us, help guide our broader public outreach efforts to be liaisons to their neighborhoods or their, you know, their constituencies, not that they're elected necessarily, but to the groups that they connect to and to really encourage people in the community to participate in the project. So these groups will both, each of them will meet four times throughout the course of the project, the way we have it laid out right now. The Technical Advisory Committee is going to meet, and I think this is just important for anyone who wants to be part of, of that group. Their first meeting is going to be January nineteenth from eleven AM to one PM. None, none of the other meetings have been scheduled. But generally speaking, again, four meetings, one in January, February, basically approximately every other month. January, February, April, June, August, September is the way we have it laid out right now. I think that's pretty much the, a good summary of what we're looking for. Happy to answer questions.
Yeah, can you, so it sounds like you've already selected approximately eighteen or so community members for the stakeholders?
That's correct.
SAT, is that what it is? SAC?
SAC, yep.
Okay, and so are you, my question is, so is that already full as far as community members are concerned? And then what about the technical committee? Can community members be on that as well, or is that only for people outside the community?
It's agencies, so.
Agencies, okay.
Yep, and regarding the Stakeholder Advisory, so the Technical Advisory Group, we've reached out to and they've all confirmed. The Stakeholder Advisory Group, we've sent out invitations and I would say we still have yet to hear back from about half of those we reached out to, so that I would say the membership of that group has not been finalized.
And is there a cap that you'd like to see on that?
I, I said to Mike, I mean, twenty twenty-three or twenty is a pretty, pretty big number, but I would, you know, I would defer to all of you in terms of if, if, you know, we can certainly share the list that we have. And if there are interests within the community that we think are not represented, we'd wanna make sure to get them on there.
Okay, thank you.
And, and so one of the things that you said, Steve, is that there will, the information that is being discussed in tech. That communication will also be discussed at SAC? I mean, there's a line of communication between Tac and SAC. Is, is that what you said?
I think what we're trying to say is, you know, we have certain deliverables that we'll be preparing throughout the course of the project. For instance, a, a report on existing conditions at both, at both of the, the, the first meeting of the Tac and SAC. There, you know, we're gonna send that document to them and give them a chance to review that and, and talk about it a little bit. And with both groups, we're gonna talk about opportunities and constraints. But while we won't talk to the Tac very much about what we're gonna do in terms of community outreach to the broader community, that is something we're gonna wanna talk to the SAC about, to our stakeholder and, and community members, so that we, you know, they have on the ground experience that, you know, and expertise with how to reach their neighbors and, and other community members that we certainly want to be aware of and take advantage of.
Okay. On the Tac, I received a text message from the Home Builders Association, Ezra. And he was asking if they could have representation on the Tac. Mike, have you received any?
I think they're on the SAC, right? So because they're, they're their own entity, they're stakeholders, essentially, they're not a tech, they're not an agency group.
Okay.
So, so they get placed into the Stakeholders Group.
Okay.
Along with a number of community members. We have, we have folks that we've tried to grab from all over the city to represent their different communities. We have folks from Edgewater, folks from Highlands, folks from Rivers Edge, folks from KCCF. Gosh, I'm trying, we have folks from Friends of the Twelveth River, River Keepers.
I have the list in front of me if you want. I mean, I think you're covering a good property owner, some of the property owner groups.
Share that list with us, please?
Yeah, how would you want that shared, Mike?
Via email. You can email it to the counselors or someone, we'll get it out to them. What I'd like to do though, Steve, is wait till it's finished and then we'll send it out.
I guess I'm wondering if any of the community members that are at tonight's meeting are on the list?
Yeah, I think Joe's on it. Joe, you're in the audience, aren't you?
Yeah, Joe's there.
Yay.
Hi, Joe.
Can I mute myself? Yes, I am.
Smith, I don't, you were part of the Walinton River Keepers group, right?
I am, but they've been asking me questions and I've been working with them, yes, but I wasn't informed one way or another if I was being included in their group for these purposes, for the Tac or the SAC purposes.
I think we lumped you in with Jan and Ashley as a part of that group there.
They technically agency or they, are you lumping them in with the stakeholders?
We're lumping them in with the stakeholders since they have a state over there.
Okay.
And what about Gary Woods? I see Gary is on.
What do we do? I think there's some other folks that we had moved out and into to try to get involved. I can't remember exactly who all.
I, I'll say this, in addition to these, you know, obviously, I'm not, I don't wanna give a hard cap on these groups, but logistically, at some point, we, we wanna, we wanna hold to a certain number. But we did identify a number of other people who we wanna talk to and, and conduct interviews with. And then, of course, there's gonna be plenty of other ways to participate throughout the process. So certainly, we'd be happy to, to do a stakeholder interview, you know, in-depth stakeholder interview with anyone who's interested.
I, I think one of the other keys is that we're also trying to be geographical here. So we're trying to get people from different areas, like the Rivermead area and out in the expansion area as well. So if we focus solely on the folks that are in this one little area, we're, we're not getting a very geographic role.
That doesn't, that won't work.
Balance, so, yeah.
So, look, this is important. This is important. We know how important it is. And we're trying to do it the right way. We're trying to make sure we get people who have a passion for whichever side they're on to be involved in this process, so that it's very transparent to everybody involved. And that's what this is attempting to do. And I have confidence in our consultants to coordinate this and to make sure that those participating are heard and also the concerns from the rest of the citizens who are not involved in this particular piece have a voice as well. So I, 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 I like the start. I like where we're headed. And I think it's extremely important that we allow this process to develop. And I think that's the important message that I have.
All right, and so just for the purpose of time here, we need to just get back on topic here and push forward with, are there any questions about what your commitment is going to be in doing this? So you're looking at about four meetings a year. You're looking at probably having to read anywhere. From my experience when we did the concept plan, it was about eight hundred pages of documentation and I had to read it about three or four times. To give you an idea of what you're gonna be up to as being a member of one of these parties. So over the course of the year, you're probably gonna have, what, thirty-two hundred pages worth of dry reading to get through?
You're telling it, aren't you, Mike?
So basically.
Do we have, how much flexibility as far as either committee about the, the date and time, right? Obviously, are, are these all going to be during the daytime, during working hours? Is there going to be flexibility for?
So Technical, the Technical Advisory Committee will likely be during day hours because we have to get agency inputs on those. Right, so the stakeholder meeting will likely be in the evening after 5:00.
Okay, I think that gives people a good understanding.
Okay, with that being said, are there any other questions?
Yes, I have a question, you know, to simplify this somewhat. You know, if there are any council members who can't make this commitment, I would not like to be considered. Don't, I mean, there's nothing wrong with saying that I have enough going on, that this is not something I'd want to volunteer for. Anybody feeling that way right now? Don't be shy, you know, nobody's going to hold that against you at all.
All right, so I've got Shawna and Dave are.
Okay, all right, that simplifies it to a degree. So the next step is to nominate or somebody volunteer, which one are we doing?
Yeah, so I would recommend we start with the Plan Commission and, you know, Chair Petrie, I'll hand it off to you to open it up to your group. This is for Plan Commissioners only, so Plan Commissioners, I invite you to unmute yourselves. And we can have you guys jump on and, and go through this. We have a counselor, well, I don't know if that's Counselor Paulson or not. Is that Counselor Paulson?
That is.
Okay.
Paulson's joining.
All right, so our Commissioner Paulson, sorry. But Lori, I'm going to hand it off to you to entertain your group and try to sort through and get me two nominations and I'll walk, I'll help walk you through it if you need. You're still muted, Lori.
Yeah, okay, can you hear me now?
Yep, got you.
Okay, um, I am aware, I have not had conversation with any of the commissioners. I have, I am aware that one of our commissioners is quite interested in the TAC Committee. And I don't know if there's any others that are interested in that, and I have had no conversation with anyone concerning the SAC part, so. But we can certainly start with talking about the person who is interested in TAC. And that would be Carol Bellows.
Hi, that's me. What can I answer anybody's questions about how I may or may not be qualified for it?
We already know you're qualified.
Yeah, so Commissioner Petrie, do you want to, so how do you want to hash this out? Do you want to ask and see if anyone else is in? Well, do you want to just have somebody nominate? How do, how do you want to proceed with this? I guess the idea would be, first off, can, can commissioners, will you show me by a show of hand, who's interested in the TAC? We have Commissioner Bellows, Commissioner Walters. All right, so we have two members that are interested in the TAC. So Chair Petrie, perhaps the way to do this is have a nomination on either Commissioner Bellows or Commissioner Walters amongst your group. So you would entertain a motion for a nominee?
Sure, that, that makes sense, so. Let's do that. Are there any, is there, do I hear a nomination for either Carol or John as a representative for? John, are you interested in TAC or SAC?
I would prefer TAC.
Okay, so we have two folks that are interested. Is there, is there a nomination for either of these folks? Do I hear a nomination?
I think Carol, you know, expressed an interest that, should we give John a little bit of, maybe a minute to see, you know, so we can hear from him on his interest in it as well?
Absolutely, go ahead. Well, first I've asked for a nomination for Carol, so is there anyone who was ready to nominate Carol for the position? What we could do is we could vote each one up or down, so. Unless, but if the, if the, if the commission is interested in hearing of what John has to say before we do that, then I don't have a problem with that.
Let's hear what John, let's hear what John has to say.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Carol.
John.
I'm from Southern California. I worked in wastewater treatment down there about 30 years and participated in the planning process for a city in Orange County, California called Irvine. And when I first started working there, the population was about 25,000 and when I left, it was 150,000. And they used a master planner from Europe. And he had some very, very interesting concepts to make Irvine very livable. And that's, that's about it. I got involved with a lot of engineering. The sewer plant had to be upgraded four times during the years I was there because the city was growing that fast. And, okay, now I'm going to say I'm done, okay? That's me.
Okay, so, so we have two, two commissioners who are interested in the TAC position. So I think we're going to have.
May I say something on my behalf?
Sure.
I have worked here in the Portland area in planning and also in an architectural design firm. Remember when Vernonia had the horrible floods? I was on the team that helped figure out how it would, how it would drain and how I worked with the civil engineer in, also in the wastewater treatment plants there. I've had contact with most of the, well, Clean Water Services forever and ever. ODOT, most of the, most of the agencies, I think that would be on the theme in my professional life.
Okay.
But I think SAC too.
All right, well, we'll start with TAC here. So is, is there a commissioner who would like to nominate either one of these folks for this position? Okay.
Billy Reynolds is unmuted. Billy, unmute yourself.
Now, now can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I would like to nominate John Walter for the TAC, one of the TAC seats.
So I know Counselor Thompson put in the chat, could we have both of them on there?
Well, we're, I think we're, our job is to have one from each, one from council and one from the commission for each, each committee is my understanding.
Can I ask, am I allowed to participate in this conversation?
You can participate in the conversation, Mayor, but in this, I don't think we have a vote.
Okay, so. So we've had a nomination. Billy has, has nominated John Walter for the TAC position.
May I self-nominate?
I think you prob, I don't know, we're pretty informal today. I, I think we could probably do that.
All right, so, so we have, so I guess Robert's rules would state that we have nomination. And then we'd need a, a motion and a second on a nomination. That nomination could either fail or proceed. You know, Commissioner Bellows sent out an email, I think everyone got a chance to read. Commissioner Walters obviously has a long history as well in public service. I don't think you can go wrong with either one. So I think what we need to do is take a peek, peek at this and, you know, the commission needs to make a hard decision on, on who is going to represent you.
All right, so when, normally speaking, when you have two people nominated for the same position, then you take a vote on each one. I don't know that we need to make it a motion, but, but we can, so let's do that. But we'll start with, I move that we vote on the nomination for Carol Bellows for the TAC position. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Billy seconds, okay, so we will now move, is there any discussion? Okay, so let's move to a vote first on Carol Bello for this TAC position.
As a point of order, are we going for whoever gets the most votes?
I think that has to be it, right? Because, so, so, so when you have two, generally speaking, in my previous times, is if the first, first person nominated gets the, the vote, that we don't go to the second. So that's, you know, but it can be in some states and situations, neither candidate gets a majority.
Okay, so we, we had a nomination from Counselor, from Commissioner Reynolds.
Right, Commissioner, Commissioner Reynolds had, had nominated John Walter and then Carol self-nominated herself. Then we went to, I asked for a motion to, just kicked it off, I move that we vote on Carol first, and that was seconded by Billy.
Yep. All right, fair enough.
So we go to a vote, first vote will be on Carol.
Okay, and then we're going to do a second vote on Mr. Walters or?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so Plan Commissioners, as I call your name, please respond with a yay or a nay and we'll move forward on this. This is to appoint Commissioner Bellows to the Technical Advisory Committee for the Master Planning Effort. All right, Commissioner Paulson.
Yay.
Commissioner Moore, I'm going to pass on you since you're technically giving up your seat. Commissioner Bellows?
Yay.
Commissioner Manellas?
Yay.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
I'll say yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
All right, so with that, we have a six to one?
Correct.
Five to one, sorry, five one.
Five to one, right.
All right.
So that.
The TAC rep for the.
Right, yeah, so that puts Carol as the TAC rep for, for the commission, right? So were there in, now moving on to the, the SAC portion, are there any, as I said, I was not aware of any commissioners who were, had expressed an interest, but at this point in time, are there any commissioners who are interested in the SAC position?
Just by a show of hands, anyone?
I mean, I would do it if no one else wanted to.
Who said that?
Mark, I was thinking of you because you are not in KCCA or in one of the other communities that in your kind of in-between position that that might be, that might make sense for you to, to be in the stakeholders group. So if you're self-nominating.
This is Annie, I second that.
So I guess you have been self-nominated whether you realize it or not, and Annie is agreeing with your self-nomination. So is there any I can go to, I will make a, I move that we vote on Mark for the position of the SAC group. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, John seconds it, so if there's any further discussion? Okay, great, so we will go to a vote. We are now voting on Mark as being appointed to the SAC Committee. All right, I'm going to call for the vote then, Mike.
Sure thing. All right, Commissioner Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Manellas?
So I'm voting myself?
Yeah. All right, Commissioner Bellows?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yay.
And Chair Petrie?
Yes.
All right, that'll do it. That's six zero. All right, so Plan Commissioners, we have Commissioner Manellas to sit on the SAC and Commissioner Bellows to sit on the TAC. Mayor Gibson, I'm handing it over to you.
Okay, I know of one person who expressed a desire to be on the SAC. And that person is Kate Moore, and I'm nominating Kate Moore for the position from council on SAC.
Second.
All right. Now it's for the SAC?
Yes, is that correct, Kate? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
And Counselor Thompson.
And only one on each committee, is that correct?
Yes.
So we have, who was the second on that? Sean, okay, gotcha. All right, thanks. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any others? Any other nominations?
Oh, you want to vote on them separately or?
I'd rather just vote on it separately if you would like, just to get through it. Vote on Kate for the SAC?
Yeah, let's do Kate and then.
Okay. Kate, so we're voting on newly appointed Counselor Moore for the Stakeholders Advisory Committee, Representative for City Council. President Fender?
Yeah.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Yes.
Counselor.
All right, gosh. Alan Flutmore?
It's been a long week.
Counselor Paulson?
Yes.
And Counselor Cholley is still out, so, so we have a six zero.
Did you ask me and I vote?
Congratulations, Counselor Moore. All right, now I need a.
The mayor didn't get to cast the vote.
Oh, sorry. Mayor Gibson, you nominated her, so I figured you were definitely a yay. There goes my perfect record.
But I want to make it official, okay, yes.
Okay. It's been a long way.
Okay, so do we have a volunteer, somebody who is really interested in being on TAC?
I was just going to say, I, I'm really interested on being on TAC, but I know for sure I cannot make the first meeting and I, I'm just, I'm a little concerned about my ability to do that. So I will nominate Micah Paulson to, to be the representative on TAC.
I'll second that.
Okay, that was smooth, I, we can vote. Micah, you're okay.
Yeah, I'll try it again.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second to nominate Counselor Paulson for the seat on the TAC. President Fender?
Yes.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Paulson?
Yes.
Counselor Platt?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Gibson?
Yes.
See, I got you that time. All right, so that's six zero in favor of Counselor Paulson to sit on the TAC.
Okay, I'm very pleased with that. Thank you, guys, for volunteering. Thank you for being ready to support this cause.
Thank you, and I will try not to take any more of your Friday evenings away from you.
Then we, do we have any time for any questions that anybody might have just before we go? Is that appropriate? Just real quickly.
We can.
I, I just.
If you're a fan of worms.
You know, I'm not afraid of it, come on.
One, one quick question.
Yes.
Are there any members of the urban growth boundary area, are there any community members that are on the SAC?
Yes.
It will be, yeah.
Cool.
There's a few people from Rivermead and a few people from further out.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so does that mean there aren't any questions I'm not going to ask again? Okay.
I think we've all had our fill this week.
Okay. Do I need a motion to close the meeting?
Second.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Guys are ready for some weekend, I can tell. All right, love you.
Have a good weekend.